Okay, it is seven o'clock on May 18, 2009. And this is the council's organizational meeting. We'll start off by the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, before we have the swearing in of the new officers, I want to congratulate the both of you and wish you both success. And I would like to take a moment to thank Councilor Pulaski for his three years of service to the community, to the town, and the various organizations he served on, and wish the rest of the council well, and everybody the best of luck. Becky, would you please come up and administer the oath of office to our two new candidates?
The people rise and raise your right hands, and you can respond by saying, "I will." Do you, Eric Bottomen, and you, Daniel Dickens, solemnly swear that you will bear faith and true allegiance to the United States of America and the state of New Hampshire, and will support the Constitution thereof, so help you God?
I will.
And do you, Eric Bottomen, and you, Daniel Dickens, solemnly and sincerely swear and affirm that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon you as a member of the Newmarket Town Council according to the best of your abilities, agreeably to the rules and regulations of this Constitution and the laws of the state of New Hampshire, so help you God?
I will.
Congratulations.
Thank you, folks. Judy will take over for nominations of the Chair.
Chair.
Right here. The quickest closest chair.
All right, I would like to entertain nominations for the Chair for the next year. Are there any nominations?
I'd like to make a nomination for Mike LaBranch for Council Chairman.
Is there a second?
Second. Can I ask a question? Where's the recording secretary?
She's working downstairs for the ZBA because this is televised.
Sorry.
Sorry.
I'm late.
We know you're always late. Are there any other nominations for Chair? All right, any discussion? Okay, could we have roll call, please?
Councilor Bottomen?
Aye.
It's only a choice of two.
Aye.
Councilor LaBranch?
Aye.
Councilor Dickens?
Aye.
Council Minutelli?
Aye.
Acting Chair Carr?
Aye. Mr. LaBranch, would you like to take over?
Thank you.
No, I'm sorry, Rose, I didn't see the thing was on.
It's easier.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I thought the next nomination was...
Okay, I guess at this point we'll take nominations for Vice Chair.
I'd like to nominate Judy Cadd for Vice Chair.
Is there a second? No second. Motion fails, dies? Is that what it is?
Does.
Okay. Are there any other nominations? I'm sorry. Councilor Minutelli?
I'll nominate Councilor Jim Bergeron.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any other nominations? Seeing none, I guess I'll ask for roll call.
Councilor Bottomen?
On whom?
On...
The first one didn't go.
Council Bergeron.
Just Council Bergeron.
Councilor Bottomen?
Aye.
Council Quox?
Nay.
Council Bergeron?
Aye.
Councilor Dickens?
Aye.
Council Minutelli?
Aye.
Council Carr?
Aye.
Chairman LaBranch?
Aye. Motion passes six one. Vice Chair? Now, based on this, the plaques.
Becky.
Dana had to go downstairs for a ZBA meeting that started this evening.
Okay. Council Pulaski, would you like to stand at the podium, please?
I'd like to present this to you, the Town of Newmarket, 2006, 2009, award of appreciation presented to Michael P. Pulaski, dedication and devotion to the Town of Newmarket and the capacity of town councilor.
Thank you very much.
Okay, I will read Councilor Glennon's. Councilor Glennon's is, Town of Newmarket, 2003, 2009, award of appreciation presented to Dana J. Glennon for dedication and devotion to the Town of Newmarket and the capacity of town councilor. And Mr. Glennon also will receive a, I guess this would be considered the Chairman's plaque for his services as Chairman for 2008, 2009. Okay, next on the agenda is adoption of the establishment of rules for council procedures. And I believe that Councilor Dickens and Bottomen just received their information, so I would, this should be adopted at the first meeting, but where they've just received it, I would like to possibly see if we could move this to Wednesday's meeting, but in the meantime, if any other councilors have any questions, suggestions, or ideas, we can discuss those right now. Does that fit okay with everyone? So. Council Quox?
On the, I'm in favor of all the amendments to it, but there's two, number 14 and number 18, kind of conflict with each other. It says under 18, annual review and adoption consistent with 3.2 of the Town Charter, this resolution shall be in effect until the next organizational meeting, which is tonight, shall renew, amend, and re-adopt or otherwise act in this resolution. But when you go to 14, it says to amend rules, so forth and so on, any proposed amendments to these rules shall be submitted in writing at a business meeting and shall be placed in the agenda under new business. So, it kind of conflicts a little. I don't know which way we should proceed.
Council Bergeron, is this, Vice Chair, is this on these two items here that Council Quox just mentioned? Your lights on.
No, no, it's another matter.
Okay.
No, I noticed that too. How I, it would be important to know what others think, but how I read that was that the council will adopt the resolution relative to the rules and proceed under them for the next year. And at any individual meeting, should someone wish to suspend them at that particular meeting, they would move to do that, and an appropriate vote would take place on that. But relative to the paragraph 18 you reference, I think it means that the council will annually adopt those rules. That's how I understood, because I actually had the same concern, but I reread them, and that was my reading of those particular rules.
Councilor Quox, is there some way you'd like to see it revised, or...
I'm just, I think with the two new members, if they could have a chance to read this over...
Oh, definitely. That's why, I don't want to move on this tonight, because it's not fair to them, but what I would like to do is at least the sitting councilors that have gone through this before, if we can get our hashing done.
I'm happy with the changes.
Okay.
I'm happy with the changes.
Okay. Vice Chair?
Well, this is actually more of a policy matter, but the former council's policy of not allowing public comment on agenda items on the evening that that item is to be discussed, I'd like to reconsider that, if you don't mind, and perhaps change that so that the public is welcome to comment on agenda items, and if pertinent and in a formal and proper manner could, you know, address the council whenever we deemed it would be appropriate.
So, that gives to number 12, we're commissioned to address the council.
Though the former council's policy was not to allow it...
Well, it was the Chair's consent, correct?
Right, and I just want to, I would just like some discussion on that with this council to see if we could perhaps, you know, change that policy. I think it was a point of contention with the public, and I think that, you know, it would be nice to allow public comment on any item that they wish to choose, as long as it was done in a proper method before the council.
It sounds good as presented.
Excuse me, does someone, Councilor Carr?
Does, do you want, do you remember when or how long that has been in effect, because I, that, the way it was done, with having public forum for only non-agenda items, that wasn't put in this last year, so I'm, do you have any idea why it was put in and the reason for it, or...
I'm not sure. I can say that this is my fourth year on the council, and this is perhaps the first time that we've actually discussed the rules of procedure at the organizational meeting. So, in the past, I can probably sit here and tell you that the first year I was here, I didn't know there were rules of procedure. So, and in the past, under some of the other Chair people that I've been with, if there were people out there, more so during a business meeting, that had something that they wanted to say, and we knew it, because there were some debates that came up when we were talking about the ball fields up on Packers Falls and stuff like that, and I do know that prior Chair people had allowed the public to talk on them, but, you know, limited it. And personally, from my point of view, I don't have a problem doing that. So, where it does say that it's at the sole discretion of the Chair, I mean, I think if we could perhaps change that word to at the discretion of the council.
I'm in favor of that.
Is that an option?
Would that mean we'd have to vote every time?
If we're going to allow public comment, yes. I would say that that would mean that there'd have to be a vote. But, you know, I mean, personally, I don't see a serious issue with allowing the people to speak as long as they're sticking to the topic and not repeating themselves.
I think if this is pertinent to the subject at hand, and it's done in a formal manner, I would like to see public comment on certain items, especially some issues that are before us that are a little more contentious than others, and people can get pretty worked up about them. I'd like to see some way for them to at least, you know, voice their concerns to the council, but that doesn't mean a free-for-all before us as well.
Okay. They're not set up right, I don't think so. Councilor Bottomen?
I'd rather see it the other way. I'd rather see public comment welcomed and have us have to vote if we don't want public comment on something. I don't think we should have to vote every time there's an agenda item we want to allow public comment. We should have it the other way.
I'm learning.
There used to be another one, and we take out some of them.
I mean...
Do you mind if I ask every councillor's opinion on that matter? Maybe we could come to a consensus on this?
Certainly. I mean, Councilor Bottomen?
I think we ought to allow public comment, and if we should have to vote to specifically exclude public comment, if that's what we want to do. It should just be a policy that the public is welcome to comment.
Okay. Council Quox?
I agree there should be public comment. I don't know if we would have to vote at it or just have at the Chair's discretion. Either way.
I welcome any form of public comment as long as it's done in an orderly and formal fashion, and doesn't turn out to be a shouting match or a free-for-all for the council.
I think that's sticking with the, within Article 12, or where it says it has to be on topic in specific. I like the five minutes, and then maybe add a caveat near that the public as a whole is limited to X amount of minutes, say 25 or 30, on that topic. So, it's limited to per person and then by the group, because it will get redundant.
It could be problematic, depending on the number of people at that time, but...
Well, hopefully, if it gets to that point, or if it does get to that point, then maybe we would actually have a special public hearing for that specific topic, because obviously it's pretty big at that point. So, I definitely, and definitely not the Chair's, no offense, but not the Chair's discretion. It should be open up, flat out, and maybe a vote to limit it, not to allow it.
Council Minutelli?
Well, the issue is, you know, if we adopt the rules as they're drafted, then the public has the ability to come to the business meetings and address whatever issues they may wish to address, including agenda items, which I'm in favor of. If the question is whether or not they have the ability to continue to address those issues outside of the specific, of the public forum which is opened up, I'm in favor of Article 12 as it's drafted, which is outside of the public, which, as I read it, is comments to be made outside of the public forum, at the discretion of the Chair, which I think is the way it's drafted, and which I'm in favor of, you know. But other than that, I don't have any other real comments. If that's everyone's understanding of the rules, then I'm in favor of the rules as they're drafted. If that's not everyone's understanding, then we should have some discussion about that, because I think that the intent should be to allow the public to address these agenda items on the night that the council's going to address them. You know, they arrive, they have the ability to address them before the council takes them up, and then we will address those items as they're noticed on the agenda. So, that's how I read the rules, and I'm in favor of them as they're drafted, and as I interpret them.
I agree with Councilor Minutelli. I think it should be left the way it is written. I think if we get either voting one way or the other, it's going to just add one more layer of discussion and time-consuming things, and I'm in favor of people being able to speak, but if they're on particularly contentious items, it's going to, it's going to need somebody, one person to control it really well, or else it will get out of hand, or it could get out of hand.
I can tell you that, as Chair, I will let people speak, and I will let them speak throughout the meeting if it's necessary, especially after the council, you know, when we're doing our business meeting where we try to get things done. If we're in a situation where council's split, you know, or not everyone's buying into what's being presented, to me, it would be in our best interest if there were people that were sitting out there to get their input. So, you know, I can live with keeping this part of it the way it is, and understand that, you know, while I'm here, I will allow comments.
Thank you. I'm personally comfortable with that, that method of handling it.
Anything else on the rules at this point? Would I need a motion to table this to Wednesday's meeting? Should I get one?
It'll probably be advisable to take it up to table at that time.
Yeah, so if I can get a motion on this to table it, I would appreciate it at this time.
Make a motion to table this, the subject of public comment until Wednesday's meeting?
The rules of procedure.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'd like to make a motion to table the public, I'm sorry, I said it again, didn't I? The council rules and procedure, they're relating to the establishment of rules for council proceedings until Wednesday's meeting to allow the new councilors to digest the material.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion on it? Do I have a roll call? Mr. Winowski?
Councilor Bottomen?
Aye.
Council Quox?
Aye.
Council Bergeron?
Aye.
Council Dickens?
Aye.
Council Minutelli?
Aye.
Council Carr?
Aye.
Chairman LaBranch?
Aye. So, please be prepared Wednesday, new councilors, if you have any questions or anything. Next on the agenda is really probably the only two things that we've got to address immediately, because these require votes of the council for these two positions, and I do know that there is a planning board meeting tomorrow evening, and there's a budget meeting on Thursday, correct? I believe there's a budget meeting on Thursday, maybe you didn't get the email, I don't know. So, at this point, as we learned last year, we need to have nominations for Planning Board and Budget Committee, and I guess I'll take nominations for Planning Board first, which would be the council rep to the Planning Board. Vice Chairman Bergeron?
I'd like to nominate Eric Bottomen for Planning Board.
Is there a second? Any other, any other nominations? Councilor Quox?
I'd like to nominate Judy Cadd for Planning Board.
Is there a second? Motion dies, I guess is, is that the proper term?
Fails.
Fails, okay. Motion, for lack of a second. Okay, I'll learn this stuff. Any other nominations? Seeing none, can we have a discussion? Okay.
With Eric being on the Budget Committee the past year, do you, I don't know how he would, how you feel about who you are, or...
Sure, go ahead.
I'm comfortable doing either. I enjoyed the Budget Committee, but I'm an engineer, so I'd be comfortable on the Planning Board too. So, whatever the council decides is the best use of my abilities, I'll be more than happy to do.
Any other discussion? Mr. Winowski, will you call the roll, please?
Council Bottomen?
Aye.
Council Quox?
Aye.
Council Bergeron?
Aye.
Council Dickens?
Aye.
Council Minutelli?
Aye.
Council Carr?
Aye.
Chairman LaBranch?
Aye. So, Eric, you have a meeting tomorrow evening. I believe one of your members has just walked in, so, Council Bottomen, I'm sorry.
Mr. Chair, I just got this from Richie Sheldon. You have to appoint, I guess, a, because he's ex officio, to the Planning Board, and they cannot appoint an alternate to take the place of an ex officio. You have to appoint another council member...
That's true.
...to be an alternate for an ex officio. So, you have to, according to this, you're supposed to appoint another ex officio alternate to Mr. Bottomen.
I think that's true in both cases, but...
Okay, so, I guess basically what we're doing is we're creating a person to cover should something happen to the existing representative. So, with that, this is, okay, now, is this an appointment, or is this by vote also?
I would imagine that the council, because you're going to choose who that person is going to be, it would be a vote similar to who is your representative.
For the Planning Board?
Yep.
Yes.
I think this is addressed under Section 16, Chapter 16 of the rules that were tabled. Yeah, it says, "One member of the governing body of the municipality shall be appointed by their respective boards, blah, blah, blah. Each such member may be represented by an alternate member designated by their respective board, who shall, when sitting, have the same authority as a regular member." So, that says to me that it's a vote of the board also, and it's for the Budget Committee and the Planning Board.
Okay, so, I guess...
What number was it?
May would indicate that.
Sixteen.
The council could choose to appoint somebody or not.
Right.
You're not saying you have to, whereas in the first sentence, it says, "One member of the governing body of the municipality shall be appointed by their respective board." So, it's a situation that it's not necessary for the council to choose an alternate at this time.
And it also has different language for the Planning Board also, so...
So, then, at this point, would the proper motion be to have a alternate, to vote on having an alternate, yes or no, or that would be the proper motion to make, correct? Mr. Winowski?
Correct. The council doesn't necessarily have to appoint.
We don't necessarily have to.
But the council could vote.
Yeah, the Planning Board doesn't say that there is that.
That's just for Budget Committee. Planning Board doesn't have that requirement.
Doesn't have that language. You look on Planning Board, which is directly after the Budget Committee in Section 16, it says that the council shall appoint a member of the Town Council, other towns selected by the council.
Okay, you're right to committee, and then that.
So, it doesn't seem that the, that the council needs to appoint an alternate to the Planning Board, but you can appoint an alternate to the Budget Committee.
Council Minutelli?
Well, I, perhaps what we can do, if the council is amenable, is add that particular item to a future agenda, you know, because we're, you know, we're discussing language that I haven't seen, so it would, it makes sense to me, you know, I don't know that that's an immediate need, you know, we need to get our representatives to the Planning Board and the Budget Committee appointed tonight, and we can discuss the, you know, in the event that the person is not available or whatever, the alternate, if you will, at a future meeting. My suggestion.
I actually like that suggestion, and I'll tell you why. I kind of want to agree with Council Minutelli, because as I think has been stated with the council in the past, the amount of committees and boards that councilors sit on and have responsibilities to, in addition to being a town councilor, sometimes gets a little...
Cumbersome?
Yeah, cumbersome is probably the proper word. So, I mean, just to jump ahead a little bit, I was going to bring this up after this vote, but if you look in the packets that you received, you should all have a listing of every board and committee that there is listed for the Town of Newmarket with their resolutions. Now, I did notice that there's several of them, I don't know if they're ordinances or resolutions, but there's some of them that are not, do not have backing documentation. So, I'll be happy to let you know which ones they are, and maybe we can have Kathy take a look and see exactly how they came about, but it would be my goal, at least for the immediate future, is to see if we can't limit the boards that a councilor sits on to perhaps one board per councilor. You know, I know that's going steep, that's meaning seven, there's only going to be seven boards that are going to be covered, but some of these perhaps don't require the, a member of the council to sit there, and all we need to do is to make sure that the Chair people of those committees get the information to us, come to us when they have issues or concerns or needs, and, you know, perhaps the town government can run a little bit smoother and not tie us down to two and three meetings a week.
That's a great idea.
So, I mean, that's my thought, and by saying that, I guess I would go along with the idea of holding off on this alternate position until such a time that we've had a chance to really, you know, check it out.
Yep.
So, does anyone have any comments to my statement, or?
Just that I agree wholeheartedly.
That's fine with me.
Sounds good.
Spread yourself too thin, you can't do anything wrong. I think we need to focus on specifics.
So, can we get a motion to table? Well, we don't need to, we'll just, that's...
It was just a general discussion.
Right, right now, that's not a subject that we're going to discuss. We may discuss it later if we feel we need to, but right now, we do not. So, having said that, I guess we're on to the Budget Committee. So, do we have any nominations for Budget Committee rep? So, do we have any nominations for budget committee rep? Don't all jump in. It's fun, trust me. Vice Chair.
I'd like to nominate Dan Dickens for budget committee.
Yeah, I'll second that.
Any discussions? I will say, Councilor Dickens, that's not a bad, it's busy, you know, very end of the year, very beginning of the year, but you will have a meeting this Thursday, by the way, just to let you know. Any other nominations? Any other discussion? Call the vote, please.
Councilor Bottomen.
Aye.
Councilor Quox.
Aye.
Councilor Bergeron.
Aye.
Councilor Dickens.
Aye.
Councilor Minutelli.
Aye.
Councilor Carr.
Aye.
Chairman LaBranch.
Aye. Motion passes seven zero. Okay. The last thing on the agenda is adjournment, but I want to check with councilors, old and new, to see if there's anything that they need to know, would like to have added to Wednesday's workshop, if there's any questions that you have at the present time. Otherwise, I'll look for a motion. Motion to adjourn?
Second. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.